Recording in progress.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, September 23rd, 2025, regular scheduled meeting. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Wright, followed by the invocation by Commissioner Tinsley III. Please join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most questions, Heavenly Father. We're here today to ask for your blessings and guidance in the far form of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you all. Well, we're glad to have everybody here tonight. So we've got the approval of the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Under Presentations and Delegations, we have the honor of recognizing Erin Kelly, CAD GIS technician, as the August 2025 Strongest Link in the Chain Award recipient. GIS Director Brian Haynes and Water Waste Water Director Brandon Lewis will address. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure and honor to introduce everyone to Erin Kelly. Erin actually came to the city back in 2013 as part of our internship program and spent a number of years with us while she was attending college at UGA here in Griffin and graduated with two bachelor degrees as part of that. She ended up joining us full time at the city back in 2021 as part of our Planning and Development Department and then a year later moving over to GIS. So she's been with us for a few years here and also as an intern where she did a lot of work with the various utility departments, stormwater, water wastewater. But Erin is a special employee. We're all lucky to have her. She is a go getter, somebody who gives, you know, something to and she just jumps on it and does whatever it takes to find a solution, find an answer, get it solved. She's just a great asset for the city. She's involved in all kinds of different groups. She's been in the Edit Group, the GIAC Group, now the Great Group. She's helped with the United Way Committee, the Safety Expo. So anytime there's, you know, she's called upon, she's always jumping in and getting that. I know this award is for a strongest link and for something you do for one event that kind of stands out. She's worthy of something that's a career spanning thing, even though it's not the longest, but between internship and her full time job here, she's done wonders. We're going to let Brandon actually speak about what we've nominated her for together for this award, for the strongest link.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. I had to ask Erin which district it was for again because I forgot for a second. But District Four Cleanup is what Brian and I discussed one day at lunch about nominating Erin for that because she really took on the challenge and really just took the whole task of organizing for our sponsor of that district cleanup, the water wastewater and GIS department sponsors of that cleanup out of our hands and took it on flawlessly. She, her communication was just excellent. As Brian mentioned, as he alluded to previously, Erin brings a high degree of professionalism to everything that she does and she was the main part of making sure that cleanup was a success and made us all look good in the process. So I thank her for her efforts and would like to invite her to say anything.
Thank you so much. This is a really great honor and I am so thankful for my job at the city. And everything that I have done would not have been possible without my coworkers, especially Ms. Carden, who helped with all of the cleanups we've done so far. And I know we've got a couple more to go. Alexa Robinson is not here tonight, but she's done so much. I have some really great leadership, especially right behind me, a really great director. And also I want to thank Ms. O'Connor for allowing us space to do this as part of our daily jobs. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Erin. Do you have any family or friends?
Not tonight.
You'd like to be here tonight? Okay. Well, thank you so much for your service. It's always a joy to work with you and your attitude is contagious and we do appreciate you. Congratulations. Thank you. You've got to wear that every day. And Brandon, Brian, thank you all for doing the nomination. Appreciate your service. Moving to review financial reports for July 2025. Finance Director Deborah Manning Gilbert will address. Welcome, Ms. Deborah.
We're going to talk about the July financial statements tonight and that is just 8.4% into our fiscal year. In our general fund, we have collected 1.87 million in operating revenue, which is 6.7% of our budget. And expenses are 2.7 million, which is 6.3% of our operating budget. In our enterprise funds, we have collected 10.8 million in operating revenue, which is 9.4% of our budget. We've had 6.6 million in operating expenses or 6.5% of the budget. Water wastewater has 3.2 million in operating revenue or 10% of its budget and 1.2 million in operating expenses or 5.1% of its budget. Electric has 6.067 million in operating revenue or 9% of its budget and 4.5 million in operating expenses or 7.6% of its budget. Solid Waste has 1 million in operating revenue or 9% of its budget and operating expenses are $524,819 or 4.8% of its budget. Local option sales tax collected in July was $505,67, which is 8.8% of the budget. And T-S Plus collected was $432,325 or 11.6% of the budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members? Outstanding report. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving into citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. Subject to the citizen comment policy adopted on February 13, 2024, and posted for public view, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which will be strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters germane to city business. They may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. At this time, is there anybody on my left side like to come before the board? Anybody on my left side? Yes. Hi, Mr. Driver. Welcome. If you could please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Donald Driver, 534 Moore Street. I'm a citizen of Griffin, Georgia. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to ask the question, why?
Okay.
I ride our streets constantly in doing what I do.
Can you step up to the mic?
I ride our streets constantly in doing what I do every day in my occupation of being retired. And I go by streets whereby I cannot go through that street if another car is coming because of the debris that's hanging out in the road. There are a lot of streets need trimming back away from the road, scratching against our cars. The word I get, we don't have enough help. But how are we going to take care of that? Not trimming the limbs and the sticks that's overgrowth that's coming out in the road? That's a problem.
That's right.
And we need to take care of that. You know, I'm not complaining, nor whatsoever, because I'm going to stand down. I'm not going to complain to you guys anymore. But one thing I want to say before I go, remind all your employees, you work for the city of Griffin. Make sure you be at your best, best behavior when you're talking to a tax paid citizen of this city. You work for these citizens. I'm not calling names, but make sure that they know that they work for the citizens of this county, just like you all do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Driver. Is there anybody else on my left side like to come before the board? Is there a bill on my?
Ms. Marsden.
Ms. Marsden. Hi, Ms. Marsden. If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Tina Marie Marsden, 101 North Eighth Street, Griffin, Georgia. My comments this evening pertain to item number 13 of this evening's regular agenda, which are changes to the proposed fee schedule. When changes were made to the customer service policy and fee schedule back in 2023, it was stated that recommendations were presented to the board by Griffin Power staff. Now, prior to those changes in 2023, I made two board members aware of discrepancy or aware of a discrepancy in how the fee schedule was being administered. There's a line item for an after hours fee for restoration of service. That was a $25 fee that was supposed to be made for non remote electric meters, meaning if a lineman had to come out. However, that was being charged to anyone who had a remote restoration of service. So even though I brought this to board members' attention prior to voting to make changes to the policy, instead of doing a voluntary audit to review this discrepancy, the board voted to just change the policy, which now says there is a $25 after hours fee for remote restorations of electric meters. So meaning the city failed to hold itself accountable for potential overcharges. I've mentioned before that it would be beneficial to customers if the city created a committee that includes members of the public when reviewing complaints, recommendations for policy, and utility fee changes. That's all. Thank you. I just kind of just wanted to reiterate, I still support creating that committee for Griffin Power customers. I just feel it's important that consumers are a part of those decisions that are being made. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anybody else on my left side like to come before the board? Is there anybody on my right side like to come before the board? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Bivens. If you could please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Shivers. I'm at 239 Hammond Drive. I have spoke to a couple of people, but I still don't have an answer and I don't see an answer. There's a house next door to me that is vacant, but it still has everything that the lady left when she moved out, which means clothes, food, everything else. There's a pile of trash out by the road that Ken, Ken was code enforcement, told me that he was going to have the guy haul it off. Approximately two and a half weeks ago, he told me that he talked to the guy and the guy was going to clean it up. Today is September 23rd. The trash is still there. The owner has been out there every Thursday cutting grass, so he obviously has no intention of cleaning it up. Another thing that I'm being told can't do anything about it is there is an old mattress that is rotting. The rats and everything else has taken over. The rats are moving to my house, which does not make me happy. I've got an exterminator, but I still have a problem. I understand that it's private property, but the fact is nobody lives in that property. So if a guy can come over every week and cut the grass, he comes with a trailer attached. He can put the trash in that trailer. He can put the mattress in that trailer. He can haul everything off. It looks like I live in the ghetto now, which I don't and I'm just really getting tired of it. And I know y'all are getting tired of hearing from me, but you're going to keep hearing from me until something is done. So, and I don't understand why the city can't clean it up and just send him a bill because I know that at least code enforcement has his phone number. So they should be able to send him a bill or do something that should be able to get rid of this garbage, including the old mattress.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. Is there anybody else on my right side like to come before the board? Thank you all for being here tonight. Moving into public hearings. Public hearings are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinances, policy developments, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. Item three is to receive comments regarding a resolution to adopt the 2025 County Year Tax Millage Rate at the rate of 5.699, which is a rollback rate. City Manager Jessica O'Connor will address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Will you just click it? Okay. So our millage rate discussion again from this morning, as you all know, we have our historical millage rates from 2015 are 7.889. The proposed rollback rate for 2025 is 5.699, so a decrease in the last 10 years of over, or right at 2.2 mills. With that information, comparing the 2024 net digest to the 2025 net digest, there was an increase of about $15.7 million. The 2025 net digest is assessed at $945,533,342. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. So with that, at the current millage rate, as we all know, the way that the law reads, if we assess the digest when it has increased, it would be considered a tax increase, even though the rate would not increase. At this point, we are requesting, or staff recommends, that we take the rollback rate. And looking at the two different differences in the tax revenue budgeted for FY '26, we have broken out what is in the general fund versus what is in TAD 1 and what is in TAD 2. So that total equals $5,595,000. At the current rate, at 100% collections, we would be at $5,572,027. If you look at the rollback rate, we'd be at $5,388,595. With the growth that we have experienced and lost, as well as our income, our insurance premium taxes, we do feel like we have the ability to accept the rollback rate at this time moving forward for the tax bills that will go out in a month. Are there any questions?
Any questions from board members? All right. This is a public hearing. At this time, is there anybody in the audience like to come up and ask questions, make statements, or comments? Moving to the consent agenda, we have items four through 10. Do we have a motion to take the consent agenda as a whole?
Second.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Moving to the regular scheduled agenda. Consider a resolution adopting the 2025 County Year Property Tax Millage Rate of 5.699.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Murray with a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor of the resolution, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item 12 is consider the minutes at the Board of Commissioners' regular scheduled meeting on August 26, 25, and Commissioner Wright was absent. Do we have a motion to?
Second.
Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Murray with a second. All in favor of the minutes, please signal by raising your hand. Six zero with one abstention, Mr. Wright. Item 13 is to consider a resolution to adopt proposed changes to the Sea Griffin Consolidated Fee Schedule, last updated August 2024.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the resolution, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero in favor. Item 14 is considered a purchase of a downtown audio system from Vibez Entertainment Tech DBA, Auburn AV, sole quote in the amount of $121,900 and amend the budget accordingly.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tinsley. Any discussion or comments? All in favor of the purchase, please signal by raising your hand. All against, seven zero in favor. Item 15 is to consider a task order formed to the master service agreement between the City of Griffin and LGA. Got that right this time, Rodney. In the amount of $1,050 for the subsurface investigation of two locations on Hamilton Boulevard for the realignment project.
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Ward with a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor of the task order form, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Item 16 is consider authorization agreement for the 2026 annual subscription between MEA Power and the City of Griffin to sell excess capacity.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the authorization agreement, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero in approval. Item 17 is to consider a second amendment to the Sam Sarah Inc., current vendor, the total of $49,259.66 for additional vehicle gateway license, hardware licenses, hardware installation on solid waste garbage trucks and equipment.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Ward with a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor of the second amendment, please raise your hand. Seven zero in favor. Item 18 is considered adoption of a second supplemental bond resolution authorizing issuance in the aggregate principal amount of $71,890,000. $71,890,000 to acquire, construct, and equip certain improvements to the city's combined public utility system, including rehabilitation the city of Griffin's Potato Creek Watershed Treatment Plant, sewer system facilities, and expanding and upgrading the City of Griffin Shoal Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. Make a motion. You got a second, a motion from Commissioner Tinsley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero.
Mr. Mayor, we have Todd Barnes with us, Raymond James, tonight.
Yes, sir.
I think he would speak to you briefly about the results of our pricing today and the ratings we got from Moody's this year.
Wonderful. Thank you for being here, sir.
Stephen Swinson is also with the Bond Council from Savannah.
Welcome to Griffin.
Thank you for having me and certainly don't want to interrupt the swift progress that's being made this evening. But, and normally Bill Camp would be here with you, but he and his wife are left today for a trip for their 20th anniversary, so he sends his regards. But I do bring you good news. As Bill had indicated to you all leading up to the sale, that the market had been trending in the right direction with rates moving lower, which was great. And we saw that continue today as we went into the market with your roughly $70 million in bonds. And after an hour and a half of order period, we had orders totaling over $500 million from 42 separate investors. As a result, we were able to lower the yields even more by as much as 10 basis points in some maturities. And so the difference from yesterday to today with those lowering of rates reduced the total payback by a little over a million dollars. And so we ended up, as a result of those changes in the rates, we were also able to then lower the total amount of bonds being sold. So the final amount was $68,605,000. And with the premium that that generates, meet all of your objectives, putting $70 million into the project fund for the projects and to pay all of the costs associated with issuing the bonds. And with your approval of the resolution tonight, then we'll move forward with the next steps leading to a closing of the transaction on October 29th, when funds will be delivered and put to work.
Great job.
Great news.
Yes.
Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any board member questions or comments?
Great.
Thank you.
Fantastic. And I'll leave a few things with Jessica that she can share with you all, just so you have a record of it.
Wonderful. Thank you for your service on this matter.
Right, thank you.
And do we need to amend the amount? Drew, are we good to go in regards to the? Drew? Drew? Mr. Allen?
Second, Todd.
Do we need to amend the amount of the money that we're approving on the resolution?
Yes, if you would amend the amount of the motion, we had it on the agenda, on what we planned on the agenda together.
So we need to amend it to $68,600,000?
$1,890,000. That needs to be 68.
605?
Million 605,000.
Okay.
68,605,000.
Okay. So who, Mr. Tinsley made the initial motion, second by Mr. Wright. Mr. Tinsley, will you amend your motion to be $68,605,000? So Mr. Tinsley with a motion to amend his motion. Do we have a second, Mr. Wright?
Yes, second.
Okay. The motion is second. All in favor of the amended motion at $68,605,000? Please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. Thank you. Item 19 is to consider a claim for defamation to the Talalaga News based on a proposed annul item notice dated September 6, 2025 and a demand letter for compensation due to defamation dated June 23, 2025, both from Talalaga News. Do we have a motion to deny?
Make a motion to deny the claim.
Commissioner Murray with a motion to deny.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the denial? Please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero for denial. Item 20 is consider cancellation of the regular scheduled meeting on Tuesday, November 11, 2025, which is Veterans Day, a federal, state, and city holiday.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Murray with a motion to cancel the meeting.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven zero. And that is our meeting for tonight. So we'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. First, a big congratulations to Erin Kelly. She is certainly well deserving. I say that every month, I feel like. But Erin has gone above and beyond in way more capacities than just this past month. And so I'm glad to see that she was recognized for that. And thank you to Brandon and Brian for making that nomination. I have been asked by the Transportation Committee to have a consensus from all of you to issue a letter to the Georgia Department of Transportation urging them to move up the progress on State Route 155. So I wanted to make sure that y'all were okay with me drafting such letter and sending that to GDA. I think the county is doing the same and the Transportation Committee.
Yeah, ma'am.
Okay. We've been working on it since 1948, so maybe, maybe one day. Our cleanup this past Saturday was very successful as well, and so I wanted to share those statistics with you. This is the time that we have had the most community groups that attended. Southern Crescent came, UGA Griffin, Student Veterans of America, the Rock Springs Beta Club, and New Avenue Recovery all joined us to help clean up in District 5. This was in honor of National Cleanup Day because September is National Cleanup Month, so it was very fitting. We had 60 volunteers picked up 22 tires and over 1,200 pounds of garbage. Thank you to Commissioner Tinsley, Commissioner McCord, and Mayor Holberg that were able to attend Saturday morning. We have two left, one in District 1. That is during our annual stream cleanup on October 25th. annual stream cleanup on October 25th, so we'll be doing streets and streams that day, so that should be probably our largest event of the year. And then also National Recycling Week is in November, which will be District 3 on November 15th. So we will, of course, we'll have more information that will be publicized. There are sign-up geniuses that go out, so we hope that y'all will join us. Also, look for an email, Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Murray, from Ms. Carden. She does send that a couple weeks in advance, asking if there's anywhere in particular, or if there are certain special projects that we may be able to have a volunteer group go in and help, particularly with a group that may be a home that may not be able to help itself. And also wanted to let you all know that I will be submitting an application for the Visionary City Awards through GMA. We believe that the Ann Street Community Center Precinct Project is a really big ordeal and bigger than we thought, because when we started pulling statistics, the crime rate has dropped by 55% since April in Raymond Head Park. We've had a lot of other very interesting things that we didn't really think would happen, have a lot of good community impact statements from some teachers and some kids in the area. So we're excited to submit that as a Visionary City Award. And then lastly, I wanted you all to know, you did approve a TOF tonight for the Hamilton Kincaid Realignment Project. That is a big undertaking, and I think a lot of people are receiving a lot of questions about that, myself included. With the College Street speeding, there's also been some concerns about where to place stop signs. We are proposing a stop sign with that realignment to also go onto College Street. But I think at this time, because of the amount of feedback we've already had, we're going to try and host a town hall for whoever would like to participate in that, to show those plans together, the sidewalk, as well as the realignment of that intersection, and go ahead and get whatever feedback. It's not really changeable at this point, but I want to make sure everybody is aware of what is coming, and so that they're able to offer any feedback that they have at that time. So I will let you know when Ms. Eller and I are able to get that scheduled with LGA. And that is it for me.
Wonderful. Mr. Allen?
Just very quickly, I wanted to point out to y'all something Todd did not mention. We had to do a rating with Moody's Investor Service for this bond issue, and we upped our rating. We came out at A1, which is excellent and very good positive financial statement of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curtis?
A question for Mr. Driver. What's, what area or what street that you were saying that the grass and stuff were like that?
Central.
Central.
You got eight streets, you got sidewalks, there's a number of them. I can, I.
Okay, just give me a call.
You know, you got, you got people that work for the city and ride, and they jump there and they both know it's so right there. And you got two blocks that have been.
Okay, just give me a call. All right. And thank everyone for coming up.
Thank you, Ms. Curtis. Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Tinsley?
I would like to thank the residents of Waterford Ellis. The day before, I was out there campaigning and told a few of them that we'd be out there Saturday. And when we got there Saturday, a lot of the stuff that was there on Friday was gone. So they cleaned up a lot of that stuff themselves, especially along the entrance. And I'd like to give a shout out to Marissa Eller for putting the long-awaited traffic alert signals there on West Ellis to alert those, on West Ellis that there's traffic coming in or coming out on Crystal Brook. So it looks really good, had a lot of positive comments about that as well. And thanks for the commissioners that showed up Saturday. Appreciate it very much.
Commissioner McCord?
I tried to stay brief, but I got to throw this one out there. I think it was last Saturday, they, there were some organizers of the Griffin Spalding Class Reunion from 1979 to 2022 that was included Griffin High School and Spalding High School. Those, I want to make sure I get all the names right. Satania Payne, Erica Starks, and Joe Ward. They were the organizers, along with the representatives from each class. It was, since I've been in Griffin for 55 years, 1970, and I made my entrance, it was the greatest event that the city has put together, that was put together in the city, I can't say the city put it together. But it was just, it was a great time. A lot of people came back to our city, spent money in our city, came out to the park, had a great time. If you look on social media, you'll see pictures and people are still talking about it continuously. So it was just, it was a great moment, and I wanted to make sure I got that in the minutes to let everybody know that Griffin and Spalding had a great reunion.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Murray?
I just want to thank everyone for coming, and thank you, Ms. Kelly. It's such an honor. Thank you for being with us. And going with what Commissioner Tinsley said about Marissa Eller, thank you. I've had so many citizens to reach out and thank us for the continued paving projects that have been going on throughout the city. And I've had a lot of citizens to really reach out and tell me that the entire area around the hospital is so much better with traffic and driving, and it's so much smoother for the ambulances and the emergency staff. So thank you for doing that for our city. I know you're not quite done, or just citizens, be patient with us, and it's making it better for everybody every day. So that's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So we had several bullet points hit. In regards to millage rate, this is exciting. For those that have been here since 2004, our millage rate was 8.6, down to 5.699. We've reduced the millage rate by 35% in 22 years. So those of you of y'all that have been here since then, great job, and those others supporting it and moving forward. Community cleanup was amazing. There was this young man from Pike County. He saw it online about doing community cleanup. 22 years old, had no interest to Pike, Griffin, other than he just wanted to serve. So he spent the several hours picking up trash, 16th Street, Lake Avenue, and that area, and just, he wants to go into environmental and become some type of job that deals with the environment. And so our staff actually had a time to network and talk to him. So who knows, he might be an intern next year. But it's great to see folks from other communities actually caring enough to come to Griffin. Spalding County Fair, wanted to give a shout out to Griffin PD officers that worked out there in terms of their hospitality and working with the citizens. And any Griffin Fire Rescue folks here, amazing job in regards to your community outreach with the alls booth. So thank you, Griffin Fire Rescue, for being out there every day and working with the kids and talking about all the stuff y'all talk about. Resolution regarding personal care homes, I'm glad that we're able to come to an agreement this morning on that matter today to help out the lady that wants to serve members of our community. Griffin Golf Course, shout out. Two consecutive months of over $100,000 of revenue. When you think back to being less than $20,000 a month revenue, unbelievable job, the Griffin Golf Course and the marketing and everything else.
You going to mention my hole in one?
Oh, yes. And Rodney McCord got hole in one.
On August 27. I mean, I didn't know if you wanted to mention.
That's great news. I've never had one, but congratulations.
Please put that in a minute. I was waiting on somebody to say.
Yeah, so put them in, hole in one, Rodney McCord. What was the date?
August 27.
What iron were you using?
Seven iron, hole number 17. Played 107 to six, but actually it was playing like 230.
What was the humidity?
I just called it.
What was the humidity? Great news. And the final item, with Jeremy Stratton here, in this board and this community working together, Fire Maker is finally open on West Bank Street. And to think what we've been through as a community, as a board, trying to support that initiative, that effort, big shout out to the DDA. It is amazing. They've got soft opening is going on right now. Ribbon cutting is October 1st, I believe, at 2 o'clock. So if you haven't made it to Fire Maker, unbelievable investment, but because of the DDA and this board working together, we made it happen. So congratulations to your team on that. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please raise your hand and leave. Thank you all.
Recording stopped.